Sure, trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Renfro.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Habs, absent for tonight.
Who's that?
I'm sorry?
Yes. He does need to.
So we're gonna start with the presentations of the annualized report. We're gonna start with Recreation and Parks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ryan. Good evening, Mayor trustees. The Park and Recreation Commission, mostly meeting on Saturday, May 28th, 6:30 PM at Kennedy Memorial Park. In attendance were Commissioners Renee Cordura, Ricky Cook, Laura Swatz, Randy Harrison, and Superintendent George Sanders, I was excused, and Commissioners Jeff Spencer and Barbara Wallace Atzer. The meeting was called to order at 6:45 PM by Superintendent George Sanders. It was a motion to accept the meeting of march, meeting minutes five. Commissioner Renee Cordura, the motion was seconded by Commissioner Randy Harrison, and the motion was capped. The commission reviewed eleven letters from the community requesting the use of facilities at Hempstead Parks. Eight requests were approved, two requests were denied, and one request was placed on hold pending receipt of further information requested by the commission. The commission reviewed old business, which was the dedication of the skate plaza at Kennedy Memorial Park, to new athletic field at Kennedy Memorial Park, which is scheduled to be completed by the end of July. And the parking lot spaces were also to be repainted, but due to the construction of the athletic field, that will be done after the field is completed. And also, the commissioners will review the fee structure that we established in the beginning of the year and finalize it at our next meeting. Also, new business was discussed. The pool safety plan for the 2019 pool application, and updated safety plan for the Kennedy Park Pool Complex has been submitted to the Nassau County Department of Health. Repaving of the Kennedy Park path and installation of the outdoor volleyball court has been completed. The only remaining update is to align the volleyball court. The meeting was adjourned at 7:50 PM by Commissioner Renee Cordura. The next monthly meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission will be scheduled for Tuesday, June 25th, beginning at 6:30 PM. What I'm about to say is off a topic regarding my report, but since I'm up here, I decided to say it now. I would like to personally thank the person responsible for the six-week introduction to Spanish classes held at the Hempstead Public Library in April and May. I attended these classes on Tuesday from 6:30 to 8 o'clock PM, and instruct the Miss Iwo's excellent. All the participants have one question, which I present to the board. Are these, are their plans to continue these classes at Hempstead Public Library in the immediate future?
First, I want to say, um, uh, thank you. It's, um, we do everything possible for our listeners.
Okay, so, is anybody...
I would've been more impressed if you said it in Spanish.
I started, I started to do that, but I didn't, only because I wanted to stress the fact that we need part two.
Point, final point. And also, let's pray for the staff members that are lost.
Yes.
I, I will plan out at the next FPI coming, uh, February 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Relations?
Ladies notice, I'm talking.
By the way, Charlotte, is there any pressure you can explain?
You go with me. I, before I do my report, I concur with Ms. Henry. I did attend the, um, six-week Spanish class, and I can attest to that. I did attempt to take a Spanish class before, and I struggled with it. But with this young lady at the Spanish class, I did learn a lot. And it was, it was, um, her teaching style really helped us. So our, my activity report for the Human Relations Council. Tuesday, May 9th, we attended a planning meeting with the local pastors in anticipation for the Village of Hempstead Annual Gospel Night event, which will encompass worship for the entire community. Every culture that's in the community will be represented during this Gospel Night. Thursday, May 16th, the Village of Hempstead hosted the annual Old Americans Month program, where we recognized 25 seniors that resided in the village. We just recognized the seniors for their wisdom, their strength, and their contributions to the betterment of the village. Monday, May 20th, residents and seniors, excuse me, Monday, May 20th, I attended the meeting at 155 Greenwich. Residents and seniors occasionally reach out to me in regards to food pantries, because they're struggling to get their needs met. So I arranged for island harvests. Throughout the next few months, we're going to attend various senior buildings with the intent to help them sign up for the SNAP program. Sunday, May 26th, I attended the, actually hosted the 134th Memorial Day Ceremony and Parade at Greenfield Cemetery. Just wanted to let the community know that this Saturday, June 8th, the Village of Hempstead will host its annual Tyree Curry 5K Walk Run. We ask that everyone come out and attend. Also, we're gonna have a health fair and a community day. June 15th, the Village of Hempstead will be celebrating its second annual Juneteenth Day. So we hope that everyone can come out and attend. That's going to be on June 15th at Kennedy Park. The hours are 1:00 to 5:00 PM. As well, I'd just suggest everyone subscribe to the community calendar on the village website, www.villagedhempstead.org.
Um, Ms. Wallace, before you are sat down, I just want to make it known that language duality, dual language, is an idea that none other than Henry Holly, I believe it was 2014, 2015 school year, at the annual Book Bad giveaway. He suggested to myself, Lamonty Johnson, that language duality in our school, dual language, is important. And we're doing our best to foster that program, with the duality from the earlier grades. And I'm happy that adults such as yourself will also enjoy what the village is offering in regards to dual language.
Well, I think it's imperative, because we have to serve the residents of the village. The culture here is changing.
Right.
So we need to be equipped to be able to help them.
Right. And we want you to be able to compete at global level, on a job level. We want you to be able to say, "I'm bilingual." So when it comes time for that job application, we need you to prepare. And rest of the residents.
Well, I, I would say that as well, as well as my educational requirements will help me better to be served in that capacity as well.
You're applying, Josh. People can go for it.
Thank you so very much.
And the Tyree Curry event is not at 8:00?
9:00 AM, yes, to 2:00 PM.
Thank you.
First, the wiring desk of work?
There's no report and no changes.
Thank you. Hempstead Library? Traffic Safety Board? Hempstead Council Civics Association?
I don't have too much to report, but I wanted to let everybody know that Tuesday of last week, through the trustees, Waverly Hobbs and Jeffrey Daniels, got a bus and being in a field without residents, went around to some of the places that were discussed in the meetings. And one of the places that we went to was the, the house, the home in the heist where the backhomes and stuff were taken over. The building needs to be removed. And we also went on a planned another bus trip through the developers' wood for residents, so that we can see what was going on in that neighborhood. Thank you.
It's actually 2:40 Bennett that is referred to. I know it's on the list with the Zombie Home Task Force. I will report that, um, we do have a back home trapper coming. We had to get sign off from the property manager from the bank before we can enter and put the traps in. That has to detain by the building department, and the traps should be set by then.
You also would like to mention that Deputy Mayor Charles Renfro, along with our village videographer, Antonio Kelly, pretty much immortalized what was going on at that house more than a month ago.
Hear, hear.
Youth Council? Zoning Board? Planning Board Chair Person, Paris Wasier, Michelle Lee. So she left a report. Mayor Ryan, board trustees, village departments, and village residents incorporated Village of Hempstead planning board meeting met on May 20th, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Present was She Walker, Leroy Brown, Newwood Dean, Marcia Turner, and Commander Perez, absent none. Also present, Jackie Soro, council to the planning board, and Michelle Benz, administrator of the planning board. Seconds of the minutes, more by Kennedy Perez, at the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 23rd, 2019. Gideon Spencer, with Lee accepted as reviewed. Second by Newwood Dean, who were the favorite. Case decisions that followed, cases were approved. Case number 755, 121 Vidal Street, for site plan approval of Supreme Coalition Council. Case number 773, 199 Fulton Avenue, for site plan approval, Verizon facade restoration. Case number 774, 27 Commander Avenue, site plan approval to construct a two-story single-family dwelling. Case number 775, 123 Main Street, site plan approval of professional coach barber shop. Case number 776, site plan approval on Princeton Street for subdivision of lot and to construct two-and-a-half story brick dwelling. Case number 778, 522 Peninsula Boulevard, site plan approval of New Stone Plaza. And case number 782, 44 Elm Avenue, site plan approval to construct a one-story family dwelling. There be no further business. A motion was made by Kennedy Perez to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Marcia Turner, and all were in favor. The next planning board meeting will be held Monday, June 17th, 2019, at 6:30 PM, respectfully submitted by Kennedy Perez Chair Person. Hempstead Housing Authority?
It's a nice day today.
CDA?
Good evening, your honors trustees. Just to note of some of the current projects the CDA is working on. Empire State Property Production Initiative, also known as ESPRE. The grant term has been extended through March 31st, 2020. The CDA has requested an additional allocation of $54,750 to support the Community Empowerment Resource Center through the end of the grant term. These funds will be matched with community development block grant funds. We also held an inter-agency council 90-minute stress management workshop on May 23rd with representatives from 10 agencies participating with an overwhelmingly positive response. The Local Initiative Support Coalition is the initiative that funds our zombie home initiatives. We have received an additional grant award of $50,000. The CDA will work with the Zombie Homes Task Force to determine the best use of this additional funding. The CDA's properties. We will be submitting site plan approval for the development of 38 Thorn Avenue into a three-story, excuse me, a three-bedroom or a three-bedroom duplex. We're hoping to get that on the calendar for the July zoning and planning board meetings. The next general meeting of the Hempstead Community Land Trust will be held at Kennedy Park on Tuesday, June 11th, beginning at 6:30 PM. Our Safe Routes to School Grant. We're moving forward with the Jackson Maine Elementary School. The design phase has been completed, and the project is currently out for bid through 11:00 AM on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. The project is on track to be, to complete construction in the summer of 2019. We also met with Acting Superintendent Regina Armstrong to discuss the construction schedule for Jackson Maine, as well as the educational components for David A. Patterson and Jackson Maine. This educational rollout is scheduled to be implemented in the fall of 2019. The Main Street beautification project is in its final phases. Tree plantings, benches, bike racks, and tracts receptacles are scheduled to be installed this month. The delivery of the water feature has been delayed by the manufacturer and should be completed by August 2019. We also underwent a state review, and there were findings based upon the report and the record-keeping by Gideon Construction. And we held a debriefing on May 29th to develop a correction action plan, and we are in the process of implementing that correctional action at this time. The Brownville Opportunities Area Steering Committee was held a meeting on Thursday, May 23rd. The public meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 27th. We have flyers in the back. It will be held at Kennedy Park from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. We have flyers in English and Spanish. We also met with representative from, from RXR on May 28th to discuss the Nassau County project. We discussed opportunities for collaboration for local businesses, minority women on business enterprise goals, internships for our students, as well as a workforce pipeline. We also discussed potential impacts on village transportation and infrastructure. So in addition to the Hempstead Community Land Trust meeting, I wanted to make the village officials aware that there will be a fair housing training, a one-hour fair housing training held during the board of director meetings for the land trust from 5:30 to 6:30 at the, at Kennedy Park prior to the land trust general body meeting. Additionally, I wanted to announce, you'll see some flyers in the back. The Hempstead Youth Bill program is kicking off. Registration will begin this month with the classes to begin in September of this year. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give a little info on the state finances.
Basically, so Merck is just a review of the records of the project files. And Gideon is our consultant that's responsible for tracking site approval by the prime contractor and making sure that all the records are properly organized. When the state comes in to review the files, they weren't as organized as they should have been. And their findings with recommendations as to what's missing and how that should be corrected. We held a debriefing with Gideon, and they've been in over the last several days to get the files in order. Once that corrective action plan is completed, the state will come back in to review. And it's our hope to be able to close it out once the last installation is completed at the end of the installation of the water feature. And, and sort of it should be in compliance within the next few weeks.
It is, well, it's funny, um, the, the Main Street project.
Yes.
Can we communicate if it hasn't been communicated to Janice, so we can put that up on the board's website? In terms of the closing of construction schedule with this and with self-regaining Frankie Fager to discuss that as well? So at least the residents know where the traffic points are gonna be in terms of backup and delays in the, in the village, right? Because there's a lot of projects going on. Sometimes Franklin is, is torn off. Yeah, it's congested. So if the residents know at a time, at least they can plan for it.
I will definitely follow up if needed.
And it will do the same with Franklin and the people there. Then is the last thing on, on the, on the hub project? Is that a connection directly to the CDA in terms of trying to measure what the impact is going to be? Or is the, the village also having that same dialogue with, with the hub in terms of what the impact, potential impact would be?
We've measured them. There's a few of us that are on different committees. We have measured them, were updated on a constant basis, meeting, developing, figuring out.
So I serve on several committees throughout the county. Related committees, for example, I serve on the Union Hill, Union Hill Land Trust Board of Directors. And because of the various committees I serve on, I often get more than one chance to speak out on different issues. And I always bring up the impacts on the Village of Hempstead when I speak at any of these meetings. And because of some of the concerns I raise, they felt it important enough to come and sit down with me directly to talk about it. The mayor is absolutely correct. He represents the village on the steering committee to talk about not only the community benefits, but the infrastructure, et cetera. But it never hurts to have several people speaking out on the village.
No, I was a good step, man. I wasn't aware I was tapped, so. Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, particularly to committees like traffic safety.
So I'm not. I'm not on an active committee, but they sought me out because I was complaining. So they saw, they came, they came to address some of the concerns that I had expressed. And, and the mayor is our representative on the, on the steering committee.
Electrical Board?
Please, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, trustees. I present the book of the Electrical License Board. Last regular meeting of the Electrical License Board was held at the Building Department on May 23rd, 2019, called order at 4:15 PM. Present was Mr. Constantine, the electric inspector, Mr. Kengemi, Mr. Dmitru, myself, absent with Mr. Casilla. Minutes of the meeting of the April 2019 were approved as read, while we're in favor. The following applicant, there was no applications to take the exam this month. The following applicant passed for one of the license exam. Ms. Renee DiPiazza of Golden City, New York. The following applicant failed for one of the electrical licensing exam. Mr. James Madigan of Brookhaven, New York. And the following applicant has given his oral exit exam and recommended for an electrical license for the Village of Hempstead by the board of trustees, Mr. Brian Flanagan of Huntington, New York. Motion was made by myself and seconded by Mr. Kengemi and Karen, anonymously. Discussion took place regarding continuation of the discussion on Article 11026 of the National Electrical Code, dedicated equipment space about electrical switchboards, panels, and motor control centers. Also, PSCNG requirements for obtaining temporary electrical certificates was discussed, and questions were addressed from Mr. Constantine. Next meeting will be June 27th, 2019. With no further business to come before the board, the meeting was adjourned at 6:00 PM, respectfully submitted. Give the secretary a copy.
Thank you.
Any questions? Everybody's good?
You too. Coming Board?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Hope everybody's okay, good residents. Hello, good afternoon. A regular meeting of the Exam Board of Plumbers was called to order at 4:15 PM, May 28th. We had two new applicants this month to become Tri-Town Plumbers. The first was John McGrady of Glencov. After reviewing his paperwork, he met all of the Tri-Town requirements and was accepted as a village plumber. The second applicant was Joseph Petley. After reviewing his paperwork, it was determined that he did not meet all the requirements to become a Tri-Town plumber. Therefore, he was not accepted. We also had a brief discussion on the suspension of temporary gas from national grid. That's going back and forth. It's still up in the air right now. We'll discuss it the next meeting to see where we stand with that. And there being no further business at this time, the meeting was adjourned at approximately 5:15 PM. Thank you.
Is she starting? Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. And everybody, you set a nice example. Mostly of mine is just continuing activities. Every week, I field up to five requests for information sent to me by people from around the country. The latest was about a 1930s to 1950s burlesque dancer who called herself Lynn O'Neill, the original Garde Girl, and who later became a member of the Hempstead Historical Society. And somebody's doing research on her. And actually, I mean, Gustavich knew this lead, so.
The library?
Not on the stage as a member of the Hempstead Historical Society. But anyway, you know, I get, I get a range of different requests like this. People asking for research, and I help out. I created a workshop for four second-grade classes from Jackson Aneth School. They were walked up to the Hempstead Public Library on May 17th for a tour of the historic photos and dolls in the library's downstairs community room. I supplied detailed historic background of the photos and the dolls. The teachers, who accompanied the children, received the more detailed version, while the children each received a handout written at the second grade level. Unfortunately, I had to be out of town on the actual day of the workshop. However, Stephanie Newsen, Joe Abodondo, the librarians in the children's room, are very experienced. Things went smoothly, and I hope to do more of these. My work with the revision for our Wikipedia site is ongoing. I am going to primary and reliable secondary sources to make sure that the information on the Wikipedia site is accurate and that it gets credit for all that our villages, village accomplishes now, as well as in the past. I'm hoping to start a regular short column in the Hempstead Beacon that would present Hempstead's historical tidbits. And in fact, the editor approved that. Needed just something really short with an image that would appear weekly or biweekly or something. At the Hempstead Public Library, a lot of written material has been generated by both me and the library's local archivist, Stephen Rum, during the past two years. We are developing a formal means of archiving this material at the Hempstead Public Library. What I'm saying is, so our research is written down. Because I, I didn't have much to go on when I got started doing this. I didn't have anybody's material directly prior to me. Most of the material was at least 25 or more years old. And so we're both writing updated material, and that will be archived there so it can be used as a research source. And I have a personal project. I've decided that all during June, I'm going to only shop in Hempstead, if possible. So I'm discovering, you know, just how many grocery stores we really do have that show all the diversity. There's a question, I, I got my sneakers at the sneaker terminal. And this is the first year. I'm having to wear them Saturday. This is the first year in years, so I'm able to walk enough to participate in Tyree Curry, so I will see you there.
Great, great shopping in Hempstead, you.
Chamber of Commerce?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, trustee. Good evening, everyone. And we do encourage shop local. We held, on June 1st, the Hempstead Chamber Head Election. We will be swearing in the new board on June 19th at 261 South Franklin Street. That's the Linda Knoll Building. The Youth Department, Artists and Camp will be holding their pop-up shop to encourage our young entrepreneurs. And it's located at 83 Greenwich Street in Hempstead. Thank you.
What time is the meeting at 261? What time is that?
That will be at 6:00, at the Linda Knoll Building.
Pop-up, but how is it gonna know? How's the village gonna be notified of it?
Well, we're going to post there on our website. And also, we're going to let everybody know through social media, as well as we're going to put up flyers as well. And the pop-up shop, basically what it is is that it's the youth department. That is children selling items that they need, or they purchase themselves. They'll also be having a workshop held by the Hempstead Chamber of Commerce, teaching them about business networking and preparing for this event.
Who's your new president?
The new, the same president, which is Aquila Bailey. And myself is the vice president, Clarone Griffin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, resolved that a recommendation of the village clerk, the board trustees hereby waive the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st, 2019. Acceptance reviewed, as reviewed, I'm sorry. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of George Gill, village treasurer, the board trustees hereby approves to enter into an agreement with Milliman Inc., One Pescomania Plaza, 38th floor, in Newark, New York, 10119, to provide actuarial consulting services to the appropriate village's center island, or a fee not exceed $14,500 for the fiscal year ending May 31st, 2019. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of Patrick Cook, village attorney, the board trustees hereby authorize the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with the appropriate village's center island, Allen's principal office at 303 St. Nyla Road, poster May 4, 1771, to utilize the Hempstead Police Department's outdoor fire range from January 1st, 2019, expiring December 31st, 2020, by a rich rental fee on a batch of schedule A.
What's the charge? I want to pay this.
Trustee Johnson?
Another question. The fee is $600 per session. Sessions last 7:30, or $1,500 to 20:00.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of Joseph Simons, superintendent of the building department, the board trustees hereby approves to issue a license as a master employee nutrition to Brian Flanagan, three-seater range, Huntington, Newark. Now a second please. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of George Gill, village treasurer, that the board trustees hereby authorizes to enter into a contract with Joseph Khan and the village of Hempstead to provide advice and consultation to the village regarding information technology from May 15, 2019, through May 31st, 2020. The village will compensate the consultant at the rates in four hours at four on the attached M6A.
Why, we don't have anyone else working at this park?
So I would.
Okay.
Let me comment, so we can perhaps solid some problems. The village is seeking to end the use of some programs and consolidating others. Justin has a unique understanding of our legacy system and is incorporating them into our new program. He is essential in this process.
Do we have no one on full-time on staff?
He is essential, yes.
Do we have anyone on staff full-time in the IT department?
We do not have anybody who can do what he is doing. That's why we're asking him to be our consultant during this period of time.
And how much are we paying him?
Probably paying him $125 an hour, 15 hours a week.
So he was an employee, and now he's a consultant?
Correct.
Are we making plans to employ someone that's a full-time?
Maybe you better move on to those, so that you follow my procedure.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of Patrick Cook, Assistant Chief of Police Department, Lisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources. The board trustees hereby authorizes Erica Lopez, Mayor Wood A, to receive supplemental sick leave at half pay in accordance with village policy, Article 7, Section 5, of the CSEA bargaining agreement. Second please.
Second. Quick question, just on the. Say, can you repeat it again?
Item 7.
To receive supplemental sick leave that half pay in accordance with village policy, Article 7, Section 5, of the CSEA?
Right, but is there, there's no question that there is a policy? Is this allowed?
It's subject to board approval.
Right, so that's not a policy?
It's, I don't have a copy, it's a contract, you know, it's a contract by which here.
I'm saying, can you, can you, can you word it so it doesn't include policy?
Okay. So we should say that's a policy. So it's, you want me to read it? Would I read it?
Yeah.
She's in the third opinion, sir.
Right, so, resolved, no, what is it? Resolved that a funded recommendation of Patrick Cook, Assistant Chief of Police Department, Lisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, that the board of trustees hereby authorizes Erica Lopez, Mayor Wood A, to receive supplemental sick leave at half pay in accordance with Article 7, Section 5 of the CSEA.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of, George Gill?
Number is four.
No. All right, I didn't know. Okay. Thank you so much. So we're moving to item number nine, right?
Yes.
Okay. Resolved that a recommendation of Lisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of a position within the appropriate village of Hempstead. Valissa Hernandez, 99 James of Garner Way, Hempstead, Newark, part-time to full-time. Neo-Tatvis Clerk, bilingual, grade 3, 0 U, with a salary of $44,791 a year upon approval.
Move, sir. Quick question. This, this is currently not a position that we currently have, right? This is a new position for that department?
No, I think it was Lee, was Lisa here? Yes.
We, that person is currently part-time, and they're creating, making a full-time position for her in the mayor's office.
Right, so we're creating a position in that, in that department and funding it through savings somewhere? Okay. So I mean, so, so basically, we creating a position that will be there indefinitely till this person leaves, which, which would normally, I would normally have an issue with, but given the workload associated with that position and the nature of the person that's in that position, I wish her the best of luck, and I think any administration, this one and those going forward would be, would greatly benefit from having this young lady in that position. I agree.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of Lisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of a position within the appropriate village of Hempstead. Alan Woods, 99 James of Garner Way, Hempstead, Newark, part-time to full-time, of the work sanitation and manual training with 107, 0 U, with a salary of $53,141 a year upon approval.
Move. I'm move.
Who's second? Thank you. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that a recommendation of Samantha Faff, Deputy Village Clerk, the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of seasonal employees of the appropriate village of Hempstead, as reviewed.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. Anybody who has a question to the open mic, please join in at this time, if not already.
Resolved that a recommendation of George Gill, village treasurer, all main bills ordered by the board trustees in support of the June 4th possibility, be approved as previously reviewed.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan, I forgot to make one announcement if I may.
I just wanted to share with the trustees as well, with the residents, we are currently conducting bilingual Ocean 30 safety training in conjunction with ABBA and Genesis Construction. It started yesterday, but there's still time to sign up. If you have anyone that you know who may be interested in having their safety certification for construction, please reach out to Reverend Ince.
Oh. Who you on?
We're full.
You're full?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Take that back.
There we go with the open mic, everyone. Rest of the workers?
Jesus. All ready?
First of all, I'd like to know, is the fire department going to be the first meeting or the second meeting of the month?
The third Tuesday of the month.
The third Tuesday of the month, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the reason why I ask you, because I was in a meeting where the union fire department gave out the lower dark stickers with their phone numbers on it. I'd like for the, we to get the same type of stickers throughout the fire department. I'd like an update on the crime that occurred in Hempstead in the last two weeks, including the shot spotters, so therefore, we'll be more aware of what's happening. I understand that there was several stabbings in the past week, about three or four or so forth. One was at one of the bars that we, in my area, was east in. And I'm trying to figure out what's happening with the bars and what's going on with the stabbings, you know, political fatalities. The, the library, is it going to open on Sundays, the sun or not? And also, essence.
I, in terms of the bars, I think the mayor has two appointments set up. One with representative of the community, and one where he'll go into penalty. Do you have a second, George?
Yes, just to let you know that stabbing did not take place in the bar.
Where did you think that, Popeye?
Popeyes.
Did it arrive from the bar to Popeyes?
I believe, no, it didn't start, it didn't even start in the bar, but I believe that the gentleman that got stabbed was from the bar. Was it just?
All right, the reason why I ask you that, because on the news media, it says that they had argument in the bar and it riles to the stabbing outside of the bar, with the Popeyes property. So that's my, that's my information.
And you asked about other stabbings?
Yes, other stabbings, yes.
There was two stabbings, these on Greenwich Street. Oh, right. Sorry.
Okay, the one at the bars, I believe you were talking about an Ole bar. It was, like they said, it was outside the bar. It was by Popeyes, and the rest was made by the third squad, so that's close.
Okay, and the other two or three or whatever?
Okay, you want to specify which ones you're talking about?
Two on the street, we had two stabbings. It was two on the street, intended to park in that little shopping mall area.
All right, yeah, one was at 270 Greenwich Street. The victim stated it was gang-related. It was actually an attempted robbery. They were asked for property, then one person was stabbed, his brother intervened, and he also was stabbed, none left, right?
Okay, so you said that it assumed to be gang-related. What is our status on gangs in those events? Is it increasing or decreasing?
That would be a question related to the gang unit. I'm not privy to that information to tell you what the status is.
Your position tonight is to?
Checking you back to us?
No, my position tonight is to inform you of the crime in the village, the shot spotted that you requested, but as far as gangs are concerned, if I knew you wanted to have that information, then I'd get it from the person who's the commanding officer of the gang.
Let's have a monthly poll on it.
Come again, you know. I go from one end to the other to try to figure out the root of the stuff. You know what I'm saying? So I just don't say stabbing, stabbing is gang-related, and what's going on. I focus on our young gang increasing or decreasing, and stuff like that, you know. That's why I go from one end to the other. So if you come again, you understand, I go from one end to the other.
I totally understand, but this is my first time in.
Okay.
That's no exception.
All right, well, with our shot spotted? What happened?
Shot spotted, you had 12 alerts, 12 shots fired between the May 21st and June 2nd.
All right, was there any personal damage, property damage?
There was property damage at 55 Merle Avenue, where a fence was damaged. A person was injured at 4, Martin Luther King Drive, shot in the leg. Yesterday, there was a, someone went to Winter Apostle with a gunshot wound to the, it may be self-inflicted based on where she was shot. There was no crime scene when I went there, so that's a story, she was good.
Okay, so the response was, was by follow-up or by shot spotted? What was the response?
Which one?
The two shootings.
Okay, the one MLK, the gun shot spotted alert. It took place inside of a car. Usually, when it's inside of a car, there's no alerts. Inside of a building, you won't get an alert. It's outside, you get an alert.
What about the fire department?
I'll connect to that.
And also, what about the library? Is it anywhere in the future that's going to open on Sundays?
I could, I can tell you that in order for that to happen, the village has to figure out the budget for it and approve it. The reason it stopped being on Sundays was that was taken out of the budget. And then, if, if the budget is approved, then the library has to figure out how hire the staff to do it. So that's the thing.
They just shift them around.
It sounds so simple to you, but they are working on it because the library, the library hours also, but these things aren't just snap schedules.
We did figure out a budget for that, and it's $41,000.
And that's by hiring new personnel or by reshifting their schedules?
The budget is $41,000 is what they need. I don't know whether to see hiring or reshifting the schedule, but we're looking to open hopefully in September.
No, because I, I, my idea of doing that would be to reshift their schedules, who goes up on the weekend, would be the opportunity. I mean, then again, I can do things sometime.
Thank you. Ronald Norman? Sylvia Stolberg?
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm, I live in Long Island. I've been here for over a decade. For the past few years, I've been working in alternative transportation organizations because I like to bike and walk, and I found it's really hard and uncomfortable to do so in Long Island and Hempstead as well. One of the things our organization's been doing is an annual bike tour parade that was in the spring, we've had three so far. And we moved it to September to correspond with Mobility Week, which is an initiative taken by the Long Island chapter of the US Green Business Council of Re-Transportation, Sustainable Transportation Committee. It expanded on car-free day long island. And one of the things that they are trying to do, and I would love to see, is to get these companies involved in this endeavor and think about ways they could work on re-transportation initiatives. And I have been talking to Charles already about Hempstead being co-sponsor of this coming parade. And right now, the parade starts at Hofstra, and the usual route has been through Eisenhower Park, about six and a half miles. And I'd be happy to work with the route that went more through Hempstead because I think Hempstead would be a great place to sponsor such a parade, and it would get kudos from the US Green Business Council, which would give awards for these things. Now, while I'm up here as well, I'd also like to talk about maybe talking to somebody about establishing a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee for Hempstead Committee that would work with local governments and local. and local advocacy organizations to think about how to make Hampstead more walkable and bikeable and in general, alternative transportation friendly. We are one of the most dangerous places in the tri-state area for pedestrian fatalities right now, and we have a lot of bikers and walkers in Hampstead, many of which don't have a choice. I would love to talk to somebody, whoever that would be, about doing such a thing in Hampstead and helping them with that if possible, or at least discussing it. And finally, I'm going to give just one little pet peeve since I'm up here and I have fifty seconds. Bennet Ave is really hard to cross on foot. There's a lot of kids crossing there. I don't know if you've done it, but Westbury, the way it's into Bennet Ave, nobody slows down here. So, so when you're at Elm Street or Pennsylvania Ave and you're crossing the street, you're really sort of dodging, especially in the wrong time of day. So I just want to throw that out there.
You need a secret study, you need a secret study with Bennet Ave.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Your suggestion. Renee Holmes?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and all the attendees of the meeting. I have, I have only one thing listed on there, but I do have a question about something that was done at the last meeting. But the first thing I'll do is ask about the master development, I'm calling the master development agreement. Several months ago, it was asked, is that agreement still in effect? And every month, I think once a month at least, myself or someone else asks about it, what's the status? And it doesn't seem like we haven't, we do get an update that it's being looked at, but that, that's just not enough of an answer for me, because by now, we should know if it's a valid agreement in effect. I think we should know if it's a valid agreement or if it's a dead deal. And I, and I don't think that somebody should have to keep asking about it in order to get an answer. I think it should be, if it's, if it's still in effect, tell why it is and go on with it. But if it's not, address it, because it's been at least three months that it's been raised at each, at least one meeting each month. That's my first thing. So, want me to say my second thing too?
Sure.
Okay, my second thing concerns the permits that, that might not be the correct terminology, for the festivals that filed their applications on or before April second. When we had the, my remembrance of the meeting in April is that it was determined that it was going to be, if you have an application and you pay eighty percent, that's was the new policy, the new formula slash policy. I may be using the wrong words. Was there a separate meeting after last month's meeting to agree to allow people who had filed before that April, on or before the April second date, or was it February second date? Is it April second, April second date, that they would only have to pay a particular percentage? Was there another meeting that the public did not know about? I'm not suggesting that anybody did anything underhanded. I'm just trying to understand because it didn't seem like that was a decision that was made at a meeting that, that I, that I?
That was voted, okay, so at the April second meeting, the board voted that all parade and festival applications, the applicant would pay eighty percent of the total cost at April second meeting.
Right.
The second meeting of the month in April, when you attended, you asked the very same question.
But, yeah.
Um, what was going to happen with those applications that were submitted prior to April second? There were six applications prior to April second. The board voted to allow those six applicants to pay fifty percent of the total cost.
Then, okay, then this is my confusion, then why did at the last, not last meeting, the meeting before that, it was, something was denied and then the people who came from the, the community left? Because they, they were complaining that they wouldn't be able to pay it. Is that, is that the same thing, the fifty percent number? Because they were saying forty-three thousand.
I, I don't know.
And that was, that was when, but that was the day that it was voted on to, if they had eighty, twenty, they were voting to come and try to say that they were in before the deadline where this was being decided and they wanted to be treated under the old rules.
That's all I wanted, was this clarification of that. But the other question, I still would like to, maybe a better?
My first question was about?
Ask the board.
So, the MTA, the MTA, the master development agreement is a contract. A contract.
Oh, I know.
A contract stands unless a judge rules that it is void or for some reason. But there's been some breach and there's some litigation. As you know, there were lawsuits filed after the MTA was entered into. There were appeals that were subsequently taken from those lawsuits. Oral argument was just held, I think, close to three months ago, two, maybe two months, give or take. And the decision on that oral argument has not come down yet. So it's still, it's still on appeal.
So, okay.
In the first apartment.
Okay.
So, to be efficient with village resources, if it's on appeal, I don't know if it makes sense for us to start another litigation proceeding, doing something else with it, but it's still on appeal with the appellate court.
Okay, so, just so I am clear about how the village of Hampstead does it, well, you still, the village didn't do it this way. If the, the village attorneys, if he or she said the contract is ended, that was it. Um, but in the village?
Oh, there was no ending.
There, there was no ending, but it had to start by a certain date, right?
There were, there were different, um, projects that were to take place under the agreement, most of which have been stayed because of the pending litigation that subsequently, subsequently went on appeal.
Okay, all right, I just, I mean, I, I never heard all that before. I just heard that it was being considered, so I thought it was maybe the village itself was the one deciding. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Free Price?
Good evening, it's hot as anything in here. Oh, God. Okay, um, so I'm in a hot seat today. The thing that is, I'm just, she, um, question, I was, thank you. Um, I heard there was, uh, there was an attempted rape of a young girl on Terrace Avenue. I don't know if you have that on that sheet. Um, in regards to people sleeping all over the village, what is the police department doing about that? That's the police department. To the board, I mentioned about this, the center raid, I used to do, have some information for me at this meeting today. And, um, in regards to, I'm trying to get everything in this, two minutes. Um, Hampstead Village, our new treasurer. What is the status of our money? That's what I want to know. The fire marshal, what are you doing, is the fire marshal, is he on board yet? And what is he doing in regards to the overcrowding in our village? And as you guys know, I am the membership chair to our new Hampstead Community Land Trust. I need your money, we need that to work. Okay, I'm serious about that. And, um, I know what you said in regards to master development, um, because people don't know that when litigation happens, everything freezes, so I don't know why they keep trying to get over on us, trying to sell and build, build. Can't nothing happen when litigation happens. So they're trying to get rid of land in the middle of all this, that's fraud. And they should, we should mention that, that they try to move land in the middle of litigation. So I don't know, did we mention that when we went to a pet appellate? And it has to go, and it has to go to Supreme Court. So we have to Supreme Court. Okay? Anyway, back to what I said. Um, I, but I think that we need to, I think that we have, we need to look for other things. We can look at Sam's Club, that can hire at least two or three hundred of our people in this village. That's something we could look for. We don't need, we, we over, already overcrowded, but we don't need any more apartments, we need jobs. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we need jobs.
Agreed.
And I'm upset that I called and I was worried about somebody that lives in this village and I still don't have an answer. Somebody was calling me who was sick and I called you, I called the police department. This should have been in some way, anybody know where Zita lives? Anybody here know Zita?
That was the problem. You gave me first name, I couldn't find her.
That, that keeps calling me and I, I hope nothing is wrong with her, because I don't know where she lives and she kept calling, so if you know where she lives, she kept calling me, but I called the police department to try to help me find her, and she kept calling me, and I don't know if she's sick or something's wrong with her. And we should be caring about our own citizens. I don't know where she lives and I called, I called you, Mr. Mayor, I know you could find out, but?
I couldn't find out where she lived either. I need more information from you.
Okay, I only have her phone number, but there's some way the police department should be able to do a reverse directory on the cell phone or something.
That's a good point.
I did, but I just, I called the police department, they told me there was nothing they could do to help me.
Is that true? They can't do anything to help her?
I didn't take the call, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just, well?
No, we can't yell out.
No, you suggested?
Please help me out. Well, I just want you to know, I was, because I was very worried and I kept calling her back and she could be, she could be stroked out or something in her house right now. And I've been calling her for days trying to get help and I don't know what's wrong with her.
Has she ever answered the phone?
She answered, but she isn't saying anything, so something could be wrong with her.
Absolutely.
Do you know where she lives?
I don't know, that's why I called, I don't know where she lives, I just have her phone number. I know she lives on Hilton, but where?
On Hilton, between Molford and Fulton, next to the law office on the west side of Hampstead. There's a white building, it's the law office, her house is right next to it. I can't give you an address, but I know.
See, I know where she?
Maybe you could, let me know where the address is.
Okay, she kept calling me and I, she wouldn't respond.
Okay, appreciate the concern, that's good. We'll get the address, we'll get these up.
To answer your question, and I think the question that this lady said, if you do have an address, we will do a welfare check.
That's what I called the police department, voted, and they said, I didn't know my address, I didn't have a phone number.
Well, I think we'll know which one.
Because I actually paid, paid like, um, you know, those, those, on white pages dot com to, to get an address for her, her phone number, but it, it worked.
We appreciate it.
Okay, so?
Thank you.
So the young girl, did you hear about that attempted rape on a young girl at one hundred Terrace?
Yes, I did, um, the third quarter is investigating that until it's closed, we aren't privy to that information. So I have no idea what's going on with it.
These people sleeping all over Hampstead in the, in the, what do you call it, panhandling? It's very serious.
Yes, um, I spoke to the commander of the community police unit. He spoke to DSS, he's trying to work on that, but there's very little he can do in that aspect. I mean, it goes beyond a homeless person, he's not committing a crime. Obviously, in the village code, the panhandling is a violation which we'll address when that comes up. But for someone walking around in the street that's homeless?
Oh, so my DNT, I can't have a DNT, is a man panhandling there every day?
Yeah, that we could address.
Okay. And I would like to meet, maybe, like, we have this community day, maybe week offices day? Like, we don't know, we have a lot of new offices.
We have these.
Um, because we don't know who they are, I would like to, I mean, I know who you are, but you know who one of your offices are? Okay, then, and centerator, did you find out anything about that?
Yeah, there is no interior, there's no down there.
And so it's not, it's not going to be?
No, it's not going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and what about our fire marshal? We have a fire marshal?
We have somebody who's that, Tony Bruno, first Sampson Thirty, so we've got Hampstead, Hampstead Fire Department. And what is he like a man?
We, we have a lot of overcrowding and as far as like, you know, in apartment buildings, it's ve, it's very serious. Especially, especially in apartment buildings on one hundred Terrace and especially five, sixteen, six hundred, it's serious overcrowding. You can work with the school district as far as how many students live in a one-bedroom apartment. We know how many one-bedroom apartments we have. That's very serious.
We'll get the building apartment involved as well.
Okay, and on the treasurer, what's the status of our money in the village?
The short answer is it is as it was, I'm here a month now. The fiscal year just ended last Friday, so we are into our new fiscal year now. So I, I don't know where we're going to finish yet, I am trying to figure that out.
Okay.
But there's still invoices coming in from last fiscal year that we'll have to pay. So I, I can't tell you right now what, what the end of the fiscal year is, we're having fair, but I hope to know myself very soon.
Okay, so I'll see you tomorrow?
I'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't forget to membership for the Hampstead Community Land Trust. I'll see you at the meeting.
Thank you. Debbie Monroe?
Because it's not on the website, so it just, it's not, what's your name?
Joe. And I know there's a schedule for paving the roads, and I just wonder when that, when that was supposed to happen or is it contingent on finishing the sidewalks? And the other question is, as I go around the village, um, I just, I just feel like some of the shops could just look better without it necessarily costing much, and I'm wondering if there are codes that maybe could be, um, refreshed in the minds of some shop owners.
Enforced. Yeah, not refreshed, enforced.
We have a code enforcement assigned to downtown, so I'll give my holler.
Yeah. So, um, do you have, do you have a main street?
The, the question on main street is whether to repay it, which we agree it needs, and then perhaps rip it up to correct the sewer issue, or see if we can get the sewer situation resolved. And we have, uh, every other side of waiting for the sewers.
Oh, it's a sewer system?
Underneath it, it's, it is over.
That has to be, that is still in the process of upgrading, that's like all over?
Sew report is, is not complete and direction, nowhere to go, is not yet answered. And we're holding off on the payment for that purpose.
Oh, so the report's incomplete?
Report may not be incomplete, report has not been paid for, so it don't happen.
Okay, oh, okay. All right, so there's just a lag in getting all the pieces to fit together. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Smith, just to let you know that they have, the code enforcement has started on Main Street. They started at the corner of Main and, and front, and they're working their way up on both sides of the street.
Oh, okay, well, it's good to know, thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, trustees.
Good evening.
Uh, one question from one quest. My question is about the public hearing I was having earlier.
The public hearing?
Public hearing I was having earlier at six sixteen tonight.
Yes.
So I could be, I got a little late. So my question is, uh, both urgency of commending chapter twenty-four of the code. What was the urgency for that and what's this?
Well, we want to be compliant with state law. And one of the things we did, we took out the term indefinite, and we changed it to where the village clerk has a two-year term and the village treasurer has a two-year term. There was also some other changes, instead of calling it the police, the justice court, there's simply a village justice court. The rest of the change was somewhat subtle, but the idea was to kind of compliance with state law.
So, so it wasn't in comparison for, it was, it was, it was, it wasn't in comparison for, you see?
Right, it wasn't in comparison for, what he said.
That's our thing.
And there was no urgency? Um, this administration is, um, trying to review the codes to make sure that they're updated and they're compliant with state law. And just as, as time moves on, we need to refresh our codes and update them. Um, the story in respect that you just mentioned, code enforcement with regards to, um, stores on Main Street. There is, for instance, the code does have, um, it does address signage and the size of signs. But one of the things that I know Commissioner Thompson and I have talked about is possibly, you're going to some villages, have you seen that the, uh, the facades are uniforms?
Yes.
They're in like village areas? It's just a beautification type thing? We've discussed that, so that's something else that we'll probably be looking at within a year. But there, there's a process to it, there are things that happen, and we're trying to make the changes as we go along. There's another public hearing on June eighteenth regarding zombie homes, dangerous buildings, right? And how we're going to be addressing those. So you'll see them going, you, you'll see them in the future, code changes that are going to be coming up.
So hold, so hold up your, your village clerk, for example, so in two years, she'll be gone?
She's been?
No, not necessarily, in two years, she could be paid higher.
Right. That's what you said last year, Mayor.
So?
In a two-year period, we contract this up, the board's wishes, renew.
That's what you said last year.
Not, this, this.
Well, that's always an option, of course.
So last year, just so, two, so, Ms. McNeil brings up, um, so, and if you remember, two years ago, should I? I was still at the?
No, I'm saying?
No, no, she, he was asking that only the person that might speak, but you can continue, please, with your?
Oh, so Ms. McNeil brings up a point related to what you're saying. So for instance, the board took action, I think it was two years ago, took action. But because the code wasn't proper at that time, the action they took was also improper. So you have to, you have to, in order to appoint the clerk as a treasurer, the code has to allow for that to happen once the term is up. Our code previously had the clerk and the treasurer as indefinite. So if the board wanted to take action and maybe change clerks or rearrange the clerks, they couldn't do that. So if the board wanted to take action and maybe change clerks or rearrange the clerks, they couldn't do that. But does it, it doesn't impact this individual except that she has a two-year term.
That's what I'm expressing, so, so you say, so it does impact, it doesn't matter, anybody in the city.
Anyone in the city.
I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking. So anyone in the city, that could impact them adversely in two years if the board doesn't like...
It's what the master builder...
Correct.
So that's not, that's not good at all.
Well, I'll tell you this, you know, most of the department heads can be impacted month to month, like myself, right? The clerk is guaranteed two years.
She's on what, six years now?
Uh, my next, I have a request, my request is... Now I have a request. Now my, now my request is, I've mentioned it to the mayor previously before. I also want the code to be amended to, up, to have the landlords' fines be upgraded because the fines I understand is today is very, very, very low and...
Now, that's not the case necessarily. The fine you're in place is after the judge, it's what he is like, used as his, I to that of the judge.
Yeah, fifty dollars. Fifty dollars.
I'm just telling you that the issue may not be the fine itself, in terms of the potential, it is what the judge determines.
So how could we get the board here to help how you...
To elect the judge for four years?
No, I'm saying, I'm not saying that, community, what can the board do to...
We can add, we can add, it's given dollars to the judge.
The right guidelines was mentioned that is you guys have jurisdiction there.
No, that's a jurisdiction of the court.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, the judge has jurisdiction of the court. The judge says the fine. He does not use the fines as a fundraiser, as I say.
So the right guidelines...
He uses his judgment as what the fine should be.
So the right guidelines, what was incorrect when everybody stated that? The right guidelines would state that you, the board here has the authority to do this.
Right, they would have, they have a statement, I don't have to get that statement.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they told me that.
Have authority to change the penalties.
So you don't have the authorities?
Yes, you have authority to change the penalties.
Excuse me.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, uh, before we go into a second...
I just try the motion, I hope it will go on, go ahead.
I want to, um, thank everyone that came out for the annual Memorial Day Parade, all the participants. I want to single out Ms. Juanita Harwood for the great job she did. Thank you.
We would all agree, glad to record that up, have a successful day and have a good day. We have the oldest parade in Long Island, thirty-three years, right?
Under thirty-four.
Yeah, that's something. Okay, let's entertain a motion for the executive session. We have a motion. I did say we will have to do that for personal...
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Raffra?
Yes.
Trustee Daniel? Mayor Ryan?
Yes, we will not come back, both of you come back and close the meeting.